This is Housing Policy Committee, Thursday the 4th of December 2025. So, good morning first of all to everyone in the committee, everyone in the room, guests, visitors, staff, et cetera, and to anyone watching online. So, we'll just have the usual arrangements for housekeeping. So first of all, I'll just ask people to make sure their phones and laptops are on silent. And the usual arrangements, so no fire test. If the fire alarm goes off, follow people out of the building and follow the signs. Toilets for people who aren't usually here, just ask a member of staff if you need them. I think that's everything. The webcast is available for online viewing now and after the meeting. And I believe it may still be broadcast on Sheffield Five. So I think that is all the items there. So, we're going to the formal items of the meeting now. So first of all, apologies for absence. And we've got apologies from councillor Baker and councillor Hussain. That's, that's it. Yep, that's everyone, isn't it? And councillor Turpin is here, so that's fine. So the second item is exclusion of press and public. And I don't think there's any reason to exclude the press and public today. Number three is declarations of interest. So, does anyone on the committee have, need to declare an interest in any of the items? Nope, not seeing anything there, so none. Minutes for the previous meeting, so on page 11 you've got the minutes from last time. Has everyone checked those and agree that they're a true record? And if so, does someone want to propose that they're a true record? Thanks. So councillor Belbin proposed a true record. Councillor Norris is seconding. All happy with that? I think we can say it's unanimously agreed, thank you very much. And then we're on to public petitions, questions and statements. Joanne, I might as well hand over to you just to tell us what we have. Sorry, just, yes.
Well, that's I was asleep, we haven't introduced ourselves.
You're correct, it was me that was asleep. We had full council yesterday, I'm sure we need to recover from that. Yes, let's go around the room. I think I said, no, I probably didn't say that Douglas Johnson, councillor City Ward, and chair of this committee. Can we go round the room, starting with councillor Williams?
Yes, thank you Chair, I'm Richard Williams, I'm the representative of Stannington Ward.
Hi, I am Rebecca Atkinson, councillor in Dorantotley.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor, lead this valley.
Fran Belbin, councillor for First Park and Labour spokesperson on the committee.
Alison Norris, councillor for Woodhouse and Hasworth.
Matt Dwyer, councillor for Burley Ward.
Thank you very much, and I'll just ask the officers at the desks to introduce themselves. Start with James.
Good morning, James Clark, director of housing.
Good morning, Robert Parkin, Legal Services.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
Thanks, and as always, when other officers come to present, I'll just ask you to introduce yourselves at the time. Great, okay, thanks. Feel free to point out if there's anything else I've missed that we should be doing. It will happen again. In the meantime, let's go back to the public petitions, et cetera, and pass over to Joanne.
Thank you Chair. We've had one question submitted relating to the remit of the committee for which the question of Mr Tiggle has received a written response. Mr Tiggle's also here to ask a supplementary question.
Great, thanks. Tony, welcome. Do you want to come up to the seat here? Yeah, if you just come have a seat here, Tony, and then just, we sat down, press the red button, press the button and the red light comes on and your mic will come on. So, just for anyone watching online, just the background is that, Tony, you've already sent in a written question, which is about the acquisitions of housing by the council. And there's a short answer, and that's available on the website now. So that's published and is out there. And then you've asked a full question for that. So, if you want to ask a question, and then I've got a note of an answer to come back to you, if that's okay.
Thank you Chair. Just a bit of context to my question. I was born in 1944, in a house that had no inside bathroom or toilet. It was lit by gas and hurricane lanterns. In 1951, when I was six, we moved on to a new council estate and it was like paradise. We had a front and back garden, healthy place to live. And then Thatcher came along and that dream was blown away for so many people with the right to buy. So ever since then, I valued my parents', you know, life. And they were staunch socialists and they refused to buy their council house because they saw it as a community asset. So, my question really was, arose from a really good piece of research in The Big Issue in October. If you'd like to have this copy Chair and pass it round to the committee, because I think it really raises the issue of the merry-go-round of the right to buy. But as you have answered one of my questions, it is much cheaper to buy back council homes than to build new ones. I was a bit disappointed by the reply, I thought it was a bit weak. I was expecting a much fuller reply. So in my supplementary questions, I would expect a much fuller reply. So now to my question. If you say that the cost of buying back ex-council homes is both cheaper than new build and adds to our social housing stock more quickly, will you be more ambitious and increase your proposed 417 buybacks by 2029? And the second question is what is your strategy to buy suitable properties on the open market? For example, bringing back terraced houses designed for family use but currently let by landlords? My parents, when they eventually moved to Sheffield, lived on Edmund Road. When they moved there, most of the homes were occupied by families. They were designed for families. Ninety per cent of the homes on Edmund Road in Highfield are occupied by students. I thought there's an opportunity with increasing flats available for students to encourage landlords to sell up so that families can reoccupy terraced housing. I lived in a council terraced house in the 70s, not far from Edmund Road. And at that time, the council managed hundreds of what they called sundry properties. So there's an opportunity perhaps to get back to that. You know, we have increasing homelessness and it costs you a lot of money to house families in bed and breakfast. So any way that we can increase the housing stock, the social housing stock, in the way that I suggested, I think would be really welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much, that's really good. Actually, if you just press the button on your mic, so it goes off there, thank you. So first of all, actually, thanks for just giving us a bit of the potted history, because I think it's, it's very easy for us in anybody in the country now to take for granted the fact of, you know, large council housing estates are what they are, and forgetting why they were built in the first place and why they were such a pressing need. Partly because all that housing of the sort that you described there has gone now. And so no one's got anything to compare the current estates with. So I think it's always worth bearing that in mind. In the questions on the acquisitions, so I think you talked about the, the cost of acquisitions is often less than new builds, which is certainly true. What you didn't say, which is also a factor, is that if the council can buy a house, it can be brought into use very quickly. The reality is that building new council housing or any sort of housing takes a long time. So there is a speed there. And as a result of that, the committee and the officers agree that acquisitions is probably the most effective way to increase the amount of council housing stock, for I think the reasons that we all agree is important, and it's just as you outlined. So, my notice that essentially we will go as far as possible. The big constraint is of course that buying housing also requires a lot of money. And whilst the council does have some capital, you know, it's the same constraint as building new housing, there simply isn't the money there. And of course, as you know, there's been decades of underfunding nationally in housing. I think it's also fair to say that the council doesn't have particularly clear acquisition strategy at the moment. So the council does have an acquisition strategy, it's published in 2021. And I think it's, it's perhaps not quite as effective as it should be. So it means that it's a piece of work that officers are working on behind the scenes to work out essentially where we can get the best, the best bang for our buck. Best, yeah. There isn't, I don't think we've got a timescale on it, no. So it's an ongoing piece of work and it fits into the overall approach to the Stock Increase Programme. So we'll say that, if you like, it's something that's on our radar and is an important thing. And I think everyone on the committee is in agreement with that, and it's just a piece of work that needs doing. That the piece of work that really needs doing there is working out where we can actually purchase homes. And so there is a mix of, the idea of course is to buy back homes that make complete council estates, so gaps where they have been sold off through right to buy, which reflects your original question, because that brings so many more advantages in terms of maintenance of the whole block and the environment around it. But that's just one of the things to think about. So I'll leave that there, it's a piece of work's in hand. And yeah, thanks for the question, it's been a thought working. I should probably write something up that just brings these notes that I've been provided with and send them to you. And presumably publish them on the website too, so there's a record of that. Thank you very much, Tony. We don't normally have discussions about members' questions, but I'm happy to take one from Alison.
So it was just a point of information, there's also a Securing the Future of Council Housing National Campaign, which Sheffield is co-chairing, which is looking at changing the overall national environment to make it easier to increase social housing again. So you might be interested in that if you don't know about it. Securing the future of council housing.
Okay. Actually, yes, that would be really good. It'd be nice if we can have a look at that. Pass it around, it'd be good if we can, someone got a copy of that too. Oh, thanks. In fact, if you leave it here, we can get it back to you at some point if you need. Right, okay, shall we focus on the agenda again? We are now on to members' questions, and there's none other, right, so that's item six start with. Number seven is the Work Programme, so as always, going to hand over to Joanne for that one.
Thank you Chair. There's just three additions to mention. One on a report on heat regulation and supply agreements, which has been put on the Work Programme for the March meeting in the new year. The updates on the Housing Capital Programme, which we're having the first one of today, they've now been scheduled as regular quarterly updates. And the draft housing asset management strategy is scheduled for the March meeting as well. So that's everything that I've got to report, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Belbin.
Thank you, I just wanted to ask, I know it's in the pending column, the item on private sector housing enforcement and so on, and it talks about timing that for when the Renters' Rights Act comes in. But I think we have got quite clear timelines for when that act is coming in, haven't we? So I just thought we probably want to be quite prepared for that act coming in and not just acting retrospectively. So I'd be quite keen to see that put on the agenda, thank you.
Thanks, I was going to pick that up. It does say here when the Renters' Rights Bill gets royal assent, it already has royal assent, that was in October. And I think we'd agreed, I thought we had agreed a date to bring that forward. Can we take that away? Pardon me, can we take that away, Joanne? And see when we can get that in, because it has been bumped off for a while, we do need to focus on that. There's quite a bundle of things in that area of private sector housing, which is incredibly important. All right, any other questions on the Work Programme? And if not, shall we move to just approving that? So the Work Programme has published in there with the additions that we've just been through, and the addition of looking into when we're going to look at Renters' Rights and the private sector housing section. Everyone happy with that? Yeah? Okay, all right, I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. So then we're on to the substantive items. So we're on to the big news item of the Housing and Repairs Performance Report for the current year. And I'm going to hand over to James to introduce that. The report's on page 31 of the papers. James.
Thank you Chair. So as you said, this is the report on the performance of the Housing Department relating to quarter two of the financial year 2526, so that's July, August and September of this calendar year. The overall story in the report is a continued positive trajectory of continued improvements across most of the tenant satisfaction measures, which is a trend we've noted on a number of these reports over the last kind of six to 12 months. Notably and pleasingly, satisfaction with complaints handling, which you'll recall has been discussed many times in committee, has increased by six percentage points this quarter compared to the prior quarter, albeit from a, from a low base and it's still kind of the lowest of the tenant satisfaction measure scores. That correlates quite well with the improvements in the response times that we've seen in both stage one and stage two complaints, which again is noted in the report. Performance in our repairs service for non-emergency repairs reached just under 80 per cent, which aligns strongly with what we're seeing in terms of improved tenant satisfaction in that area. So still lots of work to do in the repairs service, but, but really pleased to see continued improvements. On compliance and safety, generally a positive picture, but we have flagged one issue in the report. Following one of our scheduled deep dives, we identified a gap in our cyclical checks of communal fire doors in our mid-rise blocks. So just to be clear, no issue in the high-rise blocks, but in the mid-rise blocks, we haven't been doing that systematically. We are currently putting a plan in place to ensure we have an accurate picture of all of the assets that we need to survey, and we are looking to procure a contractor to implement those surveys whilst we recruit the appropriate number of staff to do that on a permanent basis. On voids, the time taken to re-let a vacant home reduced by 10 days in quarter two to an average of 57 days, demonstrating continued improvement in that area. And we've also seen positive movements on rent arrears, which is reported in the, in the paper. I'd also like to take the opportunity to update the committee on a really important initiative that, that has kind of happened recently, which is the implementation of the new NEC Housing IT System, which went live last month. This has been, as the committee is aware, a longstanding commitment of the council, and I'm pleased to say that after a few false starts, the implementation is now proceeded according to plan. As always the case with digital projects of this scale and complexity, there have been some teething issues during the early weeks. The key ones relate to the quality of the data on our existing systems, and as we've moved that data into our new system, we've had some issues around the transfer of the data, and that's led to some issues in particular with template letters. And the other key issue has been a disruption in the bidding cycle for, for choice-based lettings. Though on that, I'm pleased to see that we've reopened bidding today actually, and tenants are now able to bid for properties again. And I think that's all I'll say at this stage, but happy to take questions Chair, thank you.
Thanks very much, that's a nice concise summary, as always. So, there's some questions from people, so members of the committee. Right, okay, take councillor Dwyer first.
Thank you, and it was just a couple, one was on the antisocial behaviour, it jumped out probably partly because of the case, partly because of the motion yesterday, and it was just what works, it's something that blights a lot of our residents when it's happening, and something that councillor yesterday said, of the wait time, 198 days is the average wait time for resolving a case. I was just wondering what steps to take to speed up resolving those cases. And then the other was on, one of the areas of concern from tenants was generally around communal areas, and that's going in the wrong direction than we want to. And I know there's some proactive work that we're looking at doing to address that, so I was wondering if you could speak a bit about that.
Thank you councillor Dwyer. Firstly on ASB, what I don't actually know is how that, that figure compares to our peers, so I will commit to, to understand that. One, I guess, point I'd make just a fact is that often, as you'll know, as, as members who deal with these cases, these can be complex cases involving multiple issues, multiple households, and they're not always straightforward to resolve. That said, I do accept that we need to continue to look at improving our ASB service. One of the things we've recently agreed is that our housing officers who lead on complex ASB cases will have access to the kind of corporate powers that the corporate ASB team have under the Crime and Policing Act for the first time, as well as kind of tenancy breach powers, and we're going to be trialling that soon. I hope that will have a positive impact, because I recognise that one of the challenges at the moment is as a tenant, you are kind of, you run the risk of being handed off between different council teams, and that's one thing we want to address as quickly as we can. On communal areas, I think the overall story over the last 12 months has been a significant improvement in tenant satisfaction, and I think we've noted to the committee for a while that we think that's driven mainly by some of the tactical improvements we've made, particularly things like more frequent block cleaning and trying to get on top of some of the historic repair issues that we've had in our communal issues and around our blocks. I think I would always note that's going to hit the ceiling in terms of satisfaction, because there are broader issues we need to address in our estates around the lack of historic investment. And that kind of leads on to a further item on the agenda around the capital programme for the next five years, where we are planning for the first time in a long time, I think, to put a dedicated capital programme in the, in the, in the five-year capital programme focused on the areas around estates.
Thank you very much, good question. Good, councillor Williams next.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the report. For those of us who were at the tenants liaison meeting on Monday, issues with website dominated the first 30 minutes of the conversation. It's very pleasing to hear that the bidding has been resolved. They also raised the issue of outstanding, checking outstanding rent, and how are we getting on with sorting that one out?
Thank you councillor Williams, so I've had it confirmed that this was the issue around the, I think there was two issues I didn't raise, wasn't there? One was around direct debit payments, and I've had it confirmed that that is, I'm told that is working. The, the only difference at the moment is we currently need a slightly longer lead-in time for amendments to direct debits than previously, but I hope that will be resolved soon. We are aware of some of the issues, and it's not just around payments, with the, the relationship between the website, the council's website, and the new IT system. We're logging those and addressing them as quickly as we can with our partners at NEC and also our delivery partners, NTEC. So that's noted and we will resolve it ASAP, councillor Williams.
Yeah, next point is, there was just an overall concern that is significant, and there was some debate about what the actual figure was, the significant number of tenants don't have digital access or don't have easy digital access. Is, I suppose the concern is are we relying too much on the new IT system, the website, to deliver a service for our tenants?
Thank you councillor Williams, I mean, I totally recognise that, that many of our tenants would either not be digitally enabled or will not want to, to kind of transact with the council on that basis, and will want to have a conversation or a face-to-face conversation. I am absolutely committed to retaining those routes into the council. I think my argument would be that by providing better, more efficient means of, of engaging with the council digitally, that enables our staff to focus on the customers who would prefer to have those conversations and are not, are not digitally enabled. At the moment, we're not in that position, because as you know, we're relying on, in many cases, legacy IT systems that can feel quite inefficient and slow and clunky. So, so my view is the new system will put us in a better position than before to, to engage with those customers, councillor Williams.
Thanks very much, yeah, councillor Williams, happy with that. I think it's, it was just worth reflecting, it was quite a big topic of discussion at the Tenant Voices Matter meeting, and yeah, concerned about the website, it's really good news to know that it is up and running as of today, so, and I suppose it's also worth reflecting, actually, it's a big achievement, because anyone who's been, ever been through any sort of implementation of a new IT system, whether it's, you know, government level or the health service or any small business, knows, you know, what a huge disaster it can turn out to be. So the fact that this has not turned out to be a huge disaster means that there's quite a lot of people who deserve some serious credit for bringing that in. So let's hope that continues to work well. Right, thank you very much. It's going to councillor Norris first, next.
It's really excellent when, on the improvement in the voids turnaround, I mean, when we started this process, it was 120 days, and now it's down to 57 days, that's really, that's a really big improvement relatively fast. So I'm not knocking that at all, I was just a bit, I was wondering why, on page 57, it says the average time to repair empty council houses increased by seven days in quarter two, and I wondered why that was? And is it at all affected by that temporary pause in bidding that you talked about because of the new system? Or is it something else going on? And is it due to shift again in quarter three?
Thanks councillor Norris, so I can confirm it won't be because of the bidding, because this, this relates to quarter two, the bidding issues have been in quarter three in this current quarter. I mean, a lot of this is quite cyclical, particularly in repairs, because if you have a lot of void properties at the same time with a, a void team with a finite resource, that will just inevitably lead to delays. So that, that's my guess for why it's happened, but I will definitely look into that and come back to the committee with a firmer kind of set of reasons for why we've seen that increase of 10 days in that period.
Thank you very much, that's, that's good. As you said, the overall increase in dealing with voids shows the benefit of us going on about it for the last couple of years, really, it's, I'm sure there's the oil tanker analogy here too. Okay, right, councillor Turpin.
So there is a lot of good stuff in this, and it feels a bit boring, because I feel like I've said it more or less every meeting for the last three years, is the gas safety and electrical safety certificates are not coming down. You know, it's, I asked the question, you give me an answer, we look at it the next quarter, nothing's changed. And albeit, the number of electrical safety certificates has improved by about 3 or 4 per cent, that's a £20 million investment, it's not really a sufficient improvement for that level of investment, and there's stubborn 200-odd outstanding gas safety certificates, you know, what's happening?
Thanks councillor Turpin, so I think, I think they're both, they're in quite different situations, so I'll do them separately. On electrical testing, we are still, as you know, playing catch-up with the historical position the council had, where we hadn't systematically tested all of our domestic properties. So the two contractors that we've got on board are working through a programme of catching up. That was originally aimed to deliver by, I think, November 27. What's happened since then, as I think I've updated the committee at last meeting, is the government's now changed the law and brought the deadline forward by approximately a year. So we are, we are supposed to be aiming for a compliant position by, I believe it's November 26. We're currently in live negotiations with both contractors about the extent to which they can accelerate their programmes within the, the agreed cost envelope, that would be our ideal position to reach. And unlike gas, even though the percentage points look quite small, given it's a stock of 38,000, we are making good progress on catching up with the, the electrical testing cycle, focused first on the properties that haven't had a test for more than 10 years, because that's where the biggest risk is. On gas, we're in a very different position. On gas, we have caught up with that historic backlog that we had as a council. There aren't any kind of properties sat there, other than for access issues, where you've got very, very longstanding gaps in kind of cyclical testing of, of the heating systems. The main issue with gas is access, as the committee's aware of, and also with gas, you always see a seasonal peak at this time of year for various reasons, not least because the way we've done our testing means we have to test more at this time of the year. So it just creates a bit more of a pressure for our cyclical maintenance team in repairs, and also our legal team, who are dealing with the access cases and trying to get us to a point where we can get injunctions to access the properties. So I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about the kind of, the relatively small adjustments between quarters on gas safety. My bigger concern remains the problem we have around accessing that minority of our tenants' properties who won't let us in to do a gas service. We've got a paper coming in January to the committee, which deals We've got a paper coming in January to the committee, which deals with how we flex our services for vulnerable customers. And as part of that, we're going to be thinking really carefully about what the right mix of support and advocacy is, combined with, if necessary, action through our legal services colleagues and, if necessary, the courts, in order to get access to those properties.
Thanks very much. Right.
Just briefly. So how has the change in tenancy agreements affected gaining access? Because it was my understanding that there was an amendment in the, in there that that would, you know, give us easier access.
Thanks, councillor Turpin. I will ask the question on that. It's very early days, though, because that amendment, I think, was only confirmed in the last month, I believe. So it would be too early, I suspect, to see any direct correlation into into performance, but I will ask that question absolutely and come back to the committee.
Yeah, thanks. It would be helpful to circulate that around the committee and see effective date of that. Yeah, yes, councillor Turpin.
Sorry, just once more then. Just, just to ask really, regarding the electrical work, so as I think it's fifty-three per cent, so, you know, half of our council. Half of our council stock is without an up-to-date electrical certificate. But obviously, as as each day passes, there will be new properties that are no longer meet regulation. So it would be nice if we could have a report in one of the briefings. It feels like, considering how the numbers have improved in twelve months since we contracted out twenty, or was it even twenty-one million pounds? It feels like there's a pretty slim chance that we'll catch up whilst also maintaining, you know, the the new properties that that are no longer meet regulations.
Thanks, councillor Turpin. I agree with the premise of your question. It's a really challenging programme. I think a couple of clarifications. The twenty million that was agreed by committee was not just for the catch-up, it was for catch-up and then to maintain the five-year programme. One of the challenges we've got is because we're trying to catch up in a very short space of time, a matter of two or three years, it means you then end up with a very lumpy cyclical maintenance programme. So all of your electrical certificates need to be renewed in a short space of time. So we're trying to do a few things at once. We're trying to catch up with the historic kind of non-compliance backlog, but we're also trying to get to a position where we've got a smoothed programme, that means we can then deliver it over five years. And and adding to the mix the complication that we now need to achieve that a year earlier than we'd anticipated. So given all that complexity and the fact that I don't have detail today on the contractor performance, councillor Turpin, I'm happy to commit to a briefing for members on where we are with the electrical testing programme, and we can provide some of that detail around the contractual negotiations around accelerating the programme as well.
Great, thanks. Is it essential to, go on then?
I just wanted to ask about the 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 risk, not the safety risk, but the financial risk of not meeting the target that's in twelve months' time. It's off the top of my head, I think landlords can be fined up to ten thousand pounds for a property. So, you know, if we have bordering on twenty thousand properties, what what do you see as the financial risk to not meeting that target by next November?
I'm not in a position to answer that today because I don't have the detail around what the, what the kind of powers are around courts or tenants if we weren't to meet that deadline. But I will commit to include that in the briefing that I've committed to the members.
Yeah, thanks. Risk issues are always important for the committee to look at. Great, thank you. Councillor Delby, I think you want to ask a question. Thanks for being patient.
Thank you. Just following up on councillor Turpin's questions there, it's probably worth mentioning that I think the three committee leads do meet quite regularly around the meetings that we have with the regulator on these issues. So we do delve into some of that detail, which I think we can probably bring some of that information to committee-wide briefing, can't we? I wanted to go back to the tenants' voice meeting and just one of the questions I raised, particularly with regard to the suspension of the choice-based let-ins, was around what that had cost us. And I absolutely echo councillor Johnson's comments about, you know, this has been a relatively smooth piece of work and for such a huge introduction of a IT system, you know, I think it has gone very, very smoothly, but there will have been some challenges around that, so it'd be good to know what the cost was. And the other point that I just wanted to comment on, again, just because tenants brought it up, was around complaints and the shifting complaints and why it is that in some, on some of the measures here, we have no target set on others where, you know, we are looking to improve. So just to be clear that we do not set targets for the number of complaints received, and we don't think it would be appropriate to do that. So our targets are very much focused around both tenant satisfaction with how we've dealt with complaints and around the timescale within which we respond to complaints, and there are standard timescales set by the ombudsman around that. So it's whether we're meeting, whether we're complaint across those measures. So it's just to explain that really and to, again, be positive about it is good that we are seeing an increase in tenant satisfaction around that, even though it is a fairly low base, which is common across the sector. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All valid points there. I think, yeah, the the figures that they're referred to was the fact that our satisfaction with complaints is, does have a measure on it, and that's up at thirty-six per cent, which is a big increase upwards from thirty per cent before, but still slightly below our target. And can I just check that? Because when I was looking at that afterwards, it seems that that's actually slightly better than the national average, which I think is marginally better, because I think the national average is thirty-five and a half per cent. So is that right?
I believe. The information out in front of me suggests that for our peer group, which is normally how we set these targets, the target is thirty-eight per cent. So we're slightly below. It's always quite hard to do this because some of the data we're using will be a year old, some of it will be current, and there's a sector-wide push at the moment to improve complaints handling for obvious reasons, because the the TSM scores are so low. So the comparisons are challenging, but the information I've been given is that the benchmark target with our peers is thirty-eight per cent. But if there's any confusion or lack of clarity around that, we can, we can update. The only other thing I was going to say is I can answer that question directly, councillor Delby, around the impact on voids, because I've got that information from the committee now. So so it's up and running today, which means we we've not been kind of regularly advertising properties for approximately six weeks. In a typical week, you might let approximately fifty properties. What we've been doing instead is making direct lets to properties, but we haven't been able to do as many as we normally would through CBL. So that leaves us with around a hundred and eighteen properties fewer let this month than we normally, sorry, that'd be last month, last month than we normally would have done. So what we're aiming to do over the next bidding cycle into January is to catch up with that impact. There will be a a relatively small impact on, financial impact on void rent loss, but obviously we hope to recover that through through the year as far as we can.
Thanks very much. Well, if we haven't got any more questions on that, I think we're just going to go to the recommendations and I'm going to ask the committee to, just finding it, essentially, I've just been asked to note this performance report, and then paragraph two in the recommendations is redundant because we've done those. Oh, sorry, one more question, councillor Norris?
It's not a question, I just forgot to say. I don't know what other people thought, but I really liked that format of the report. Like, all the tweaks we asked were in there and it's much easier to read.
Yes, it's a fair comment. There's been a bit of discussion about how to present what we measure. So thanks very much.
For the reference, yeah, so credit to Louise Cassidy and the team who's put a lot of work into this. So thank you. She'll appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, I think that should be noted, yeah. Right, thank you very much. So I'm taking that as noted, and let's move on to the next item. And so we're on to the budget monitoring. So Jane, welcome. I assume you can find your name card. Would you like to introduce yourself first of all and then introduce the report that's on page seventy-five? As always, you know, assume that we've read it. And yeah, it gives a concise summary of it, certainly as it's relevant to housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Wilby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting, and today I'll provide you a brief overview of the budget monitoring position for quarter two, twenty-five, twenty-six, highlight the key pressures, actions underway, and the outlook for the remainder of the year. The paper's got key information about the outturn position for the council, which is the actual cost for six months of the year and a six-month forecast. And there's a summary position for the housing committee budgets in Appendix One. So the headline position is the council's projecting an overspend of twenty-three-point-six million at quarter two, which is four-point-six per cent of our net revenue budget. This is an improvement of four-point-six million since quarter one, which reflects the impacted target of mitigations and tighter spend controls. So our aim is to reduce the overspend below twenty million by the end of the year, if the current trends continue. The housing revenue account is forecasting a three-point-four million overspend to budget or a reduced contribution to the capital programme, which is an improvement of two-point-three million in the quarter. The key drivers of the overspend remain consistent in adult social care, persistent demand and high complexity of need. The overspend is forecast at twenty-nine-point-seven million, but it's improved by one-point-six million since quarter one. Children's services are overspent by nineteen-point-eight million due to rising placement costs, which has actually deteriorated by almost five million since the first quarter. The home-to-school transport position is six-point-six million over, driven by rising pupil numbers and complex timetables. Homelessness is forecast to overspend by two-point-one million in temporary accommodation, but there is significant improvement on last year. In terms of those actions and mitigations, the targeted work is underway and senior leadership is closely overseeing recovery. In adults, an improvement board is chaired by the chief exec, focusing on cutting non-essential spend using technology and transforming, using consolidating transformation projects. In children's, the service is committed to reviewing these high-cost placements and expanding kinship care and developing new fostering models. Home-to-school transport positions remain stable, but actions around demand management, expanding personal travel budgets, improving fleet efficiency, and reducing single travel taxi occupancy are underway and expect to yield results in the next quarter. The housing general fund saw an improvement of naught-point-three million in the quarter, but it is worthy to note the position represents a comparable improvement of five million on the previous year due to a number of actions, including increased prevention work, reduced use of temporary accommodation, a twenty per cent reduction in family presentation since April, and, we've heard today, improved void turnaround town for temporary accommodation, which has helped maintain the flow and reduced bottlenecks. The change in the allocations policy has made an impact. Daily occupancy controls and compliance measures with providers and new partnerships to increase supply. The strategy remains ambitious and focused on reducing the reliance on expensive hotel bed and breakfast placements and expanding the in-house provision in supported housing with the aim of ending routine B and B use within two years. The HRA saw an improvement in the overall position of two-point-three million in the quarter, with the forecast contribution to capital programme now reduced to seven-point-seven million, which is three-point-four million short of target. There was an improvement of two-point-four million in repairs and maintenance due to increased capitalisation of eligible improvement works. Subcontractor costs remain high, and the overall housing repair service is overspent by four-point-nine million. The HRA also benefited from reduced financing costs this year due to loan repayments that have resulted in seven-point-eight million pounds discount overall, which is a naught-point-eight million annual discount for the service. In response to the overall financial position, organisational spending controls are now in place, which include recruitment restrictions, vacancy factors, and tighter controls on discretionary spend. There is an exemption process for resourcing decisions, for roles that are regulatory, health and safety, income generating or grant-funded, all have a direct impact on delivering the Future Sheffield Programme. We've seen a three-point-seven million impact of introducing the vacancy factor budgeting and a positive response of services recalibrating forecasts to ensure spending plans are now realigned to expenditure targets. So corporate mitigations have also been fed into the bottom-line position, which include allocations for housing benefit subsidy loss, high-cost placements, and the use of our collection fund reserve surplus from the previous year. Transformation, so our Future Sheffield transformation programme remains pivotal to the long-term financial sustainability for the council, driving that service redesign and digital innovation. It's a collective effort, and we are seeing strong engagement across the organisation to make these changes a reality. Overall, the environment remains challenging with continued uncertainty around funding. We expect to receive the full details of the multi-year settlement in December, just before Christmas. We're continuing to manage those risks robustly, especially around the delivery of the Future Sheffield Programme and the medium-term financial strategy. In summary, we have made progress in reducing the forecast overspend, but significant pressures do remain. Our focus is on maintaining those robust controls, delivering transformation, and ensuring the value for every pound spent.
Thank you very much. So there's, you know, a very comprehensive report there, and of course, the issues that are highly relevant to this committee about the temporary accommodation overspend, which we've discussed quite a lot over the last couple of years, and then also repairs and maintenance. So so it's good to see that there's a bit more of turning various oil tankers around on this. It's going in the right direction, even though there's a long way to go. So I'm just seeing three immediate questions on this. I mean, this is an item to note, so it may be that we don't need to ask a lot of questions. We've got the report here. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I'm just intrigued by this seven-point-nine million housing benefit subsidy loss. I don't understand. What is that?
Sure. So as part of setting the budget, we have to make sure we set a balanced budget each year. We've recognised that there is an overspend in the subsidy loss position. So, you know, the position emerged over the past few years, and we've reported that consistently in terms of the overspent to budget, because there's not been a budget there to support that loss in subsidy that we get. So when we set the budget last year, and the previous year actually, we set aside an amount of seven-point-nine million to manage that overspend that relates to supported exempt accommodation and temporary accommodation. So we've held that provision centrally, so it's there as part of the budget, and we've released that into the outturn position without allocating that specific budget to the service budget, if you see what I mean, because we're trying to drive down the overspend there without having the the budget sat against that. So that that's kind of, it's kind of an accounting thing, really, I suppose. That's why we've got the provision rather than the base budget sat within the service.
So if I may, so that seven-point-nine in effect is money that in the past, historically, people have got from central government? No? Doesn't work like that?
Unfortunately not. We're not funded. So the way that the housing benefit legislation works is that if we're using our own accommodation or if we're using a registered provider, then we are able to fully reclaim the housing benefit for temporary accommodation. If we're using hotel or bed and breakfast accommodation, there's only a very small proportion that we are reimbursed from government for that amount, which leads to shortfall. So we're, so the council's having to to fund the shortfall up to the full cost of that temporary accommodation when it's in B and B and hotel accommodation. So rather than accept that, you know, we we need to make a general fund budget allocation to do that, we just need to drive down the use of temporary accommodation using the hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation. So anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you very much. Thanks very much, yes. Housing benefit subsidy is always a bit of a minefield. And I should say, I've said this before, technically, it's not a loss in subsidy. I think we're getting all the subsidy in housing benefit we can get. It's just that housing benefit doesn't cover rents. Okay, if there's no other question, there are. Councillor Norris.
Yeah, a couple of things. Just something I didn't understand, page eighty-four. A shift towards asset performance analysis to inform future investment decisions, just a clarification of that. And also about the budget cuts. I know you talked about exemptions to restrictions on spending, and it says there remains a risk to employee wellbeing and operational delivery that must be very carefully managed. And I know from feedback I've had from staff, that is really a big issue. So I just wondered how we're managing that.
Yeah, I can answer the first one on page eighty-four. So that that is a reference, albeit not not ideally worded, so I apologise for that, that'll be honest. That's a reference to some of the discussions we've been having with the committee informally and will have formally next year around the asset management strategy. And I guess taking a a more data-driven approach to understanding how much it costs for us to maintain different asset classes and therefore recommend decisions on the basis of that. I think with the second question about the impact of the recruitment restrictions, yeah, I mean, I think to provide assurance on this, first and foremost, those restrictions are designed to save money. So clearly, there will be an impact because we are, we are, we are not proceeding with some roles that ordinarily we would proceed with. However, as Jane's outlined, there are kind of deliberately worded exemptions in there, which are really relevant to these services. In particular, I'm not aware of any, any roles in the repair service or in kind of other services that are central to kind of compliance and health and safety that have not been put forward and subsequently accepted. I think the bulk of the impact in housing has been felt in neighbourhood services, particularly amongst the neighbourhood officer cohort and, to a lesser degree, the estate services bit of neighbourhoods, where there isn't a kind of clear regulatory statutory requirement, but clearly those services are really impactful on the ground and we have had to make some prioritisation decisions. and we have had to make some prioritisation decisions. We're currently, along with all directors, I think, reviewing the impacts of the restrictions and I believe that's going to play into a kind of review point that finance will lead around how we move forward with them.
Thank you very much. That's important. Council Norris?
Could we be kept updated about the results of that review?
Of course, and also I always welcome any feedback from members in terms of the impacts you're seeing on the ground. So that's gratefully received.
Thank you very much. Okay. Shall we move to recommendations? They're on page seventy seven and are being asked to note the updated information on the revenue budget out term as described in the report, including the committee budget monitoring information and the management actions and to note the targeted actions and work underway to bring the in-year overspend down. Happy people have to agree that and then we'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much. So the next item is the housing revenue account business plan. Thank you very much, Jane. I'm going to hand over to James to go through the housing revenue account.
Thank you, Chair. So colleagues, the purpose of this is to ask the committee to note the proposals for twenty six, twenty seven for the housing revenue account. The housing revenue account, as you know, is a ring fenced account within the general fund. It's where all of the income from our landlord services activities come into and it's where our expenditure for landlord services comes from. It's an important decision because it entails around, I think, over two hundred million of annual revenue spend. And this year, over five hundred and fifty million of capital spend over five years. So there's a lot of kind of, of the council's expenditure wrapped up in this decision. To be clear, the recommendations are to note because ultimately these decisions will be made by full council following a recommendation from the Strategy of Resources Committee in January and following this committee will also be taking it through the Finance and Performance Committee. Just briefly to summarise the content of the report, it's fair to say the context is challenging, probably more challenging than it's ever been nationally and that's not just about Sheffield, it is a national issue. Council Norris has already referred to some of the lobbying work that Sheffield's involved with via the campaign that the leader co-chairs with the leader of Southwark. It's fair to say most local authorities who own council housing stock are finding this really challenging at the moment. The main drivers of those challenges are around increasing demands on our services. That's reflected in things like the repairs volumes we're seeing, but also the demands from our homelessness services and to join our housing register. The costs associated with additional regulation, you know, all of which I think we welcome and will be really positive for tenants, but does come at a cost. And also the cost of living, the ongoing cost of living challenges and how that plays into the income side of the housing revenue account. And at the same time, the council's made really positive commitments around investing in housing growth and tackling climate change, which add to the kind of financial challenges that we need to address. It's really positive that the government's committed and it recommitted again, autumn statement last week, to a ten-year rent settlement for social housing, which is something we've lacked for a long time and has made it very challenging to plan over the medium term cycle. We really welcome that certainty and the recommendation is to use that certainty to invest over the next ten years. But to be clear, the settlement doesn't cover those additional burdens and pressures that councils are facing. And disappointingly, a decision on whether to confirm rent convergence was deferred until January, so we don't have clarity on that yet. In Sheffield specifically, the proposed priorities outlined in the report are to set the course, I suppose, for a sustainable level of capital investment in our housing stock over the medium term. And related to that, to provide the repairs service with a budget that reflects the demands on that service, which have changed quite considerably over the last few years. Consequently, we're proposing a significant eight point three million pound increase in the revenue contribution to capital next year. That's the single biggest investment that we're proposing to make and a two million increase in the repairs service budget. Both of those proposals reflect our total commitment to ensuring that tenants have homes that are safe, warm and in good repair. We're also continuing to target a range of performance improvements, some of which have already come up in today's discussion. Some of those will reduce expenditure and disrepair is a good example of that. Others will increase income and the continued work on voids management is a really good example of that. Through Future Sheffield, we're looking to transform the way we deliver our housing services and ensure that the housing service remains financially sustainable into the medium and long term. So we're proposing to retain capacity in the budget to support the improvement work, the transformation work and the continued kind of digital improvement of housing services. And we've also set out for the committee the level of savings that we believe are required in the revenue account over four years that are necessary to enable us to meet our commitments around increasing the size of our capital programme. To support that, we'll be recommending that dwelling and garage rents are increased by CPI plus one percent next year in line with government policy and that if convergence is confirmed in early January, that we will implement that as well. All other service charges are proposed to increase by three point eight percent, with the exception of the standing charge for district heating, where we're recommending an increase of sixty pence per week to partially offset the repair and servicing costs that we've related, that we've identified that relate to district heating. We're also recommending, Chair, that the committee agrees to consult on how to implement an increase in the citywide care alarm charge for residents in our O P L schemes, recognising that they currently pay less than other residents, including our general needs tenants, and that this has created a financial pressure in the adult care budget, which we need to address somehow. The report also includes details of the proposed five-year capital programme. This, for the first time in a long time, takes into account up-to-date stock condition data from our ongoing programme of stock condition surveys, as well as commitments the council's made around issues like building and fire safety, housing growth and climate change. Table six point three in the paper summarises the key proposed areas of capital spending. Notably, we plan to spend more than ninety million over the next five years on renewing roofs, windows, doors, kitchens and bathrooms. Almost sixty million on urgent renewals in our district heating systems, more than forty million on safety enhancements and more than fifty million on improving energy efficiency. As I mentioned a moment ago, we're also proposing to introduce a new dedicated capital programme focused on our estate environments. At the same time, we remain committed to delivering our stock increase programme in full and also honouring commitments made for regeneration at Gleedless Valley. That said, as members are well aware, the challenge of meeting the full investment needs of H R A assets is really significant. And the reports note that while we'll always prioritise essential investment in safety and decency, in other areas, the council will need to make some decisions about prioritisation and next year will be bringing back forward the next iteration of the asset management strategy, which I think will help to move that conversation on. Finally, just to thank colleagues for the amount of work that's been put into these proposals this year, and particularly Paul, who sat next to me, who's worked day and night to get this to a point where it's ready for committee. So thank you to colleagues in finance and service for all your support.
Thank you very much for that and thanks to Paul as well. Just seeing if any questions on this. Obviously, this is to some extent moving fees, although we've got a draft business plan there. It could change before it gets to the council in February, especially with the issue about rent convergence. Council Dwyer?
Yeah, I couldn't decide whether this question was more suitable to the last time or this time. So it's about Future Sheffield and it will have some delivery in year, over the next year, that will be tested by our external auditors in housing. I think it's one of the programmes they're looking at that might touch housing. But it jumped out that what governance arrangements we'd have, say, at this committee to observe monitoring of that delivery going forward, even if it's not next year, but when it starts hitting housing, how are we going to make sure we're hitting those savings targets that we're supposed to do and the improvement to services that we're expecting as well?
Thank you, Council Dwyer. I think there's two bits to that. So there is a, I can't remember this call, but there is already a board consisting of elected members focused on Future Sheffield, which some of you will sit on. And I think they will retain overall oversight of progress on the Future Sheffield programme. But as is noted in the recommendations, this committee is responsible for monitoring how well the business plan is being delivered. And I would suggest that needs to improve progress against any savings that are agreed, as has happened in previous years.
Thanks very much. Council Williams, you want to ask something?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. Having just had the national budget, the newspapers always come up with the, what does this mean to your money in your pocket? And taking that example, if all these recommendations go through, for a tenant who receives no benefits at all, plays their full whack, how much more will it cost them to be a council tenant if these all go through than currently at the moment? Has that figure been worked out?
Chair, we have got the details of the average rents for next year if this is agreed. So we can share those with members if that's helpful.
So on page forty? On page forty eight, you've got the average weekly rents of twenty five, twenty six compared to twenty six, twenty seven. That's just showing the increase of the four point eight percent. It doesn't factor everything in, but you can see the weekly difference of that four point eight percent increase. But we can certainly work on the other issues as well.
I would find it quite interesting, I'm sure I have the members, yeah, just if you had all these various increases up, what it comes to, because that's ultimately what we're asking tenants to find. And it's always those people who are just above the benefits threshold. They're not the most vulnerable in the true sense of the word, but they are kind of, they are in a way because it's their money as opposed to the benefits money, if that makes sense.
James, was there anything more to say on that? I mean, it's more of a comment there, isn't it?
Yeah, I think your comments noted, Council Williams. I think the one thing I would just clarify is on the service charges. So I accept with rents, by definition, the proposal is to increase them higher than inflation because it's CPI plus one. But for service charges, the inflation, the increase is in line with inflation. And you would expect that to be reflected in incomes as well.
I've just added, they all affect everyone as well. So things like the O P L charge and the district heating charge and, you know, they will affect some people and not others. So it's unlikely many people will be affected by all of them.
Thank you. Yeah. It's helpful to draw attention to that table on page forty eight, even if only to make private sector tenants very, very envious. Okay. Good. Council Bellby, I think you had your hand up first.
Thank you. Yes, well, I was going to make that point that you just made, Paul, around, you know, not all these charges will affect everybody. It's probably quite unlikely that you've got district heating and a garage and an O P L scheme and all those things. So it's probably hard to work out an average across the piece. I wanted to ask, and sorry, just on the Future Sheffield point as well, I think you're right. Yes, there is an oversight members group at the moment, though I think we are reviewing the governance of that at the moment. And I know there's a review of governance at office level as well, but I'd certainly expect this committee to be looking in detail at the, some of the measures that we take across housing and to be interrogating those, the members on this committee to be doing that as those changes stop to take effect. I just wanted to ask around the citywide care alarm charges and being conscious that there is work going on in the Adults Health and Social Care Committee around this and that they are looking at some issues around perhaps means testing those and whether presumably that means test would apply to our O P L tenants as well. If that's the case, I think that is being introduced at the moment. And the other point I just wanted to make was in response to Council Williams' point around people who are facing that cliff edge, if you like, which I think is always difficult. But I think we must be conscious of all the other efforts of the council across the cost of living support. And there is a lot of support available to people and it's not just available to those people that are on certain benefits. It's precisely for those people who have got, perhaps facing that kind of cliff edge. So it's important we direct any residents who have those kinds of issues towards that. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want to respond to that?
Just the first question about the O P L care alarm charge. I'm aware of the separate work that's happening in adult care. Members who are on that committee have already flagged the need to ensure that we go to residents with a single set of proposals that cover all of the things that are happening in the council and you definitely have my commitment that we'll do that. As to where we'll land with it, I don't know at this stage. Obviously, we'll have to do the work and consult with tenants.
Thank you very much, yes. Council Atkins to go in.
Hi, thank you. This is regarding the recommendations, but just something that came up from reading the rest of the report. It's about the spending priorities for repairs. So from the consultation, residents, for them, the most important, one of the most important issues is damp and mould. And obviously you're proposing to increase the spend for repairs. What happens at the moment? How, what constitutes an emergency repair for damp and mould according to A W B's law? And do we do things like providing dehumidifiers and things like that? It's like, what does that actually constitute and when does it become an emergency situation? Just a bit of clarification regarding that. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Atkinson. And a very live question because A W B's law is only kicked in kind of two months ago. So we've been very busy the last two months dealing with inquiries that have come through that route. I can share with the committee the actual legal wording that's been provided by the government for what constitutes an emergency damp and mould case versus what they call a significant damp and mould case. That's clearly defined. But for emergency, it's a very tight definition and it's really about an urgent hazard that has to be addressed there and then. And to be honest, if it's not possible to address it there and then, often the only thing you can do is to decant the resident temporarily. And that might be the case where it's not possible to immediately treat, for example, significant mould. In terms of what we do in terms of mitigations, we do all sorts of things, including provide dehumidifiers. This is a really big area of the business now for repairs and I think it's probably slightly lost in the figures because of the way we structure the repair service. But one of the things that's driven the increase in costs in repairs over the last few years, and we'll see this more now A W B's law has happened, is that kind of, that increase in damp and mould cases, which can often be quite expensive to treat because often the root cause will be structural, which requires quite a lot of investment and expenditure in order to remediate and address. If the committee wants more information on the specific measures we take around damp and mould, very happy to provide that.
Thanks. Do we want to, or shall we address that in briefings at some point? Okay, all right. Council Norris?
Firstly, it was just a comment. There's a couple of things I really, really welcome in this business plan. This shift away from revenue spending to re-increasing our capital spend. You know, it says relying on unplanned and responsive repairs is typically more costly and less efficient. So I can really see that this is a move towards the overall sustainability of the service. And I really welcome it, although I know it's a challenge to do it, but we're going in the right direction. And I really welcome the realistic repairs budget so that we don't just automatically get an overspend there. One thing I wanted to ask about, and again, like Matt, I wasn't really sure what the best place to ask this. There's a bit of a crossover again, this time with housing and children's. It's like, where do we sit with the provision of, say, four bed homes for children's homes? Because the spend on looked after children outside area is huge. And I already asked it in relation to the P V strategy about whether we would, if we had a home like that, whether we could do one of our pilots, energy pilots on that property as well, because we would also be the landlord, a bit like doing it on the school or something. So, yeah, is that Future Sheffield? Is that part of our acquisitions? Where does that crossover sit? Because it potentially saves the council a lot of money.
Thank you. So I think ultimately, I'm not evading the question, Council Norris, but ultimately I think it's for my colleague Sally to answer the question around what the overall strategy is for the accommodation needs in that service, because they are significant. They also extend quite a long way beyond what you can provide through self-contained houses. Though I do accept that there is a role that those sorts of properties can play. We work really closely with our colleagues in children's. I think the biggest constraint is we don't actually own that many larger properties and certainly not in the right locations, because as you can imagine, location is really key for that sort of provision. Four beds and certainly five beds are the sorts of properties that we lost most of as a result of the right to buy because they were obviously the most kind of popular, attractive properties, which means that as a proportion of our total stock, I believe, we own kind of really quite few. It's hundreds rather than thousands. I think the other issue is we've just heard from Jane that we've still got ongoing pressures around families being accommodated in B and B accommodation. And some of those families, we can only end our homelessness duty through letting a larger council property. So I suppose depressingly, Council Norris, there are quite a lot of competing demands for a really relatively small number of larger properties.
Yes?
I just wondered whether anybody's done a like cost benefit analysis of how much money we'd save in children's if we had more of those and whether any of that saving could be then used? And whether any of that saving could be then used by us to acquire the properties, the very sort of properties that we're short of? You know, just what, how does that add up?
I'm very happy to ask my colleagues in children's if that work has been done.
Thank you, okay. So a final question from me, I'm just looking at, I was just asking about the Gleedus Valley item. So page thirty eight of the, it's, it refers to the Gleedus Valley and the Edward Street regeneration. Edward Street's rer roofing. Then Edward Street is mentioned on page thirty nine with the little graphics there. Should Gleedus Valley be in there as well, given that we've just published the draft vision for the valley? And that ethne is part of the regeneration? Wonder if that's, Jane?
I think that's just an oversight, Chair, so we can make that a amendment. But absolutely, the, the commitment, the significant financial commitment that's been in previous business plans remains in this business plan towards Gleedus Valley.
Thanks. And if that can be picked up, that's great. And obviously, as I said before, there will be the option for some changes before this comes to Strategy and Resources Committee and then to full council in February for final approval. So if I take to the recommendations, it's on page three of the separate pack that contains a general item town. I won't read them through them all. It's noting lots and lots of things, but also agreeing to consult on implementing an increase in the citywide care alarm for those tenants who are being charged a different rate to others. People are happy to take those recommendations and then we'll move on. Yeah, again, nod, so we'll take that as approved unanimously. Thank you very much. We can then move on to item eleven. So I'm just bearing in mind it's quarter past eleven now. We've got, we've got these three items to do, haven't we? So the next one is the solar PV strategy. So anyone who's come to speak up on that, please come to the desks and then we'll ask you to do introductions of yourselves first of all. Again, for anyone finding the papers, then this is a separate agenda item published for item eleven. Dean and Nathan, welcome over to introduce yourselves, then introduce the paper.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Dean Butcher, I'm Assistant Director of Neighbourhoods.
Hi, good morning. Nathan Robinson, Service Manager for Housing Energy Efficiency. Good morning, everybody. So I am excited to bring today our draft strategy on solar PV. If it's okay, Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge and thank Manvi, Mankala within my team who's done a wonderful job of leading on this project work. Just, I suppose, kind of set the scene. When we're talking about solar PV, PV relates to photovoltaic, which in a more common vernacular is referred to as, as solar panels that you would commonly see installed on, on roofs of buildings. So I will just spend a few moments, if it's okay, just to provide the salient headlines around the development of the strategy and why it's important. So first, and I think importantly to say, is that we very much adopted a highly outward looking approach to the development of the strategy. And it's underpinned by significant research across other local authorities, housing associations, across the supply chain and wider market for, for solar PV. Importantly, it is strategically aligned to the overarching council plan and also to the, to the housing strategy. The strategy recognizes and reflects the complexity, but crucially, the importance and potential of PV to our council housing stock, particularly in three areas. And that is the potential to reduce tenants' energy bills, potential return on investment for the housing revenue account and an income opportunity, and supports the council's decarbonisation and net zero ambitions. And equally to say that the government has recently consulted on its social housing MEES, which is the Minimum Energy Efficiency Standards. We're still awaiting the government's response to that. But again, as part of a holistic strategy for our stock achieving EPCC, again, solar PV could be a key, key part of that delivery. As we've already discussed this morning, the housing revenue account is significantly under pressure and this could potentially represent a significant expenditure. That's not just about the upfront capital expenditure on installation, but also things like the ongoing maintenance and repairs. And therefore it's crucial as a council that we, we get the business model right. So this strategy establishes a number of work streams that will explore and test a range of different aspects. And this will include financial models. And that will include importantly, external finance, so such as external investors, but also climate bonds. We'll also look across different building typologies within the stock profile and different technical solutions. If we were to receive approval today on the strategy, then the target is that the design and deployment of these pilots would commence early in the new years. And we anticipate that that would conclude within the next two, two to three years. The outcome of those pilots would provide an overarching assessment to inform potential larger scale rollout of PV assets and drive potential policy proposals that will deliver the best outcomes for both our tenants and for the council. It will help, obviously in terms of our understanding of addressing key issues, key barriers, but importantly, maximising value for money and benefit. And again, we would be looking to come back to committee at the end of that period with outcomes and recommendations.
Thank you very much. Okay, so no questions for members. Council Norris.
First to say, this gladdens my heart that this is, this has come. You know, there is such a significant financial and social challenge to rise to the climate emergency. And we know we're billions of pounds short of the amount of money that we need. But for me, you know, you could get stuck in not doing anything. But what we've done, I think, is really, really sensible in that we've got a project now that's going to lay a strong foundation for business case in the future. We're going to have enough information to go out to the private sector for scale up with credible business plans. And also we're going to be really well positioned to get any further grant funding that comes in because we'll have a strong evidence base. So I really, really welcome this strategy. I'll get off my soapbox now. Some practical questions. Three things really. One is SIMCA in relation to the South Yorkshire Mero Combined Authority, where we can maximise opportunities by working with other local authorities in the area. And I know part of why that's not in there is we're spearheading it, you know, we're, we're ahead of others on this. But it would be good to bring the others with us. And there wasn't a mention of that that I could see, I might have missed it. The other is, it's great to get the, the results in three years, but is it possible to have some sort of interim evaluation of it, say eighteen months in or something like that? And the final one is with the tenant engagement and that South Yorkshire Climate Alliance have been offering in the new energy centre when that opens, they could demo some, have some of the equipment there for both tenants and the general public to see. And I know you've got plans for a demonstration home on Gleedus, which is great. But I just thought it'd be worth looking at other opportunities with the voluntary and community sector for just getting that engagement done.
Thanks, yes. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, of course. So on the first point in terms of SIMCA, we've already given a presentation in terms of our draft proposals. We've opened the doors in terms of we would welcome, again, a, a regional approach in terms of delivering something that we could scale up and benefit from those potential economies of scale. We've only done that quite recently. So again, pending the outcomes from today, I think there are significant opportunities. There's certainly interest, I think, from other members within the region that we can potentially coordinate and collate something at a larger scale. On the second point in terms of interim evaluation, yeah, absolutely. Invariably, these things do take time in terms of sort of procurement routes and, and kind of getting to market and doing that properly. So hence, that's why we want to be ambitious and, you know, deliver this as quickly as we can, but obviously do it, do it in the best way we can. But, you know, I see no reason that within eighteen months, we certainly can give an update in terms of progress and, and outcomes today. And again, would welcome engagement support from colleagues in the Climate Alliance. We already, I think, have got very good working relationships with, with those guys. Fundamentally, engagement will be vital to the rollout of this. So again, part of the design and delivery phase of the pilots will be developing a real clear, coherent engagement plan. We have an engagement officer within my service who can support some of that work. So, yeah, absolutely, we'll be looking at utilising a range of different things in terms of demonstrator properties, conversations, you know, coffee events. So, yeah, we'll, we'll look to have kind of widespread approach to it.
Thanks very much. Council Turpin.
Thanks, sorry, I wasn't trying to get your attention, I was just thinking, did I indicate before, but I did, didn't I? Thanks very much, Nathan and Manvi, this is really good. And it's like much more impressive than when you were, when it was the pre-draft draft, if you like. It really, at the time, I felt like there, there wasn't enough action. And it really feels like that's coming through now in the report. And it's, I'd certainly have more confidence, I have confidence in this report to produce. So a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. So firstly, where I think you say that the, the kind of the, the planning for the pilots will be done around about the end of next summer. And then the pilots will begin. And then two years hence, we will have all knowledge of solar in Sheffield. So I'm just thinking that that is still quite, to, to, within two years, knowing how long it can take the council to arrange for something, well, for solar panels to go on some roofs, you know, it, it could take the council two years to get the things up there. So I just wonder about the, how, how sure you are that by mid twenty eight, that we will have done these pilots and we will know what we're doing? And so the second part of that question is then, come mid twenty twenty eight, assuming we do, we are omniscient with Sheffield PV, how do we then hit the floor running rather than being, right, now we have to start another three year planning process? So that's, if you like, two parts of one question. And the, the second question I'd like to ask is in the list of five pilots, there's, that's two or possibly three, a kind of unfair funding method. So you've got council capital funding, climate bond and energy as a service model. The other two don't have a, kind of an inference of how they'll be funded. So I wondered if those five pilots are actually completely comparable? But I don't have a problem with that per se. I just wondered also is it, how, or I haven't noticed it in the report, about using the, the kind of the, the CICs who provide energy generation such as Sheffield Renewables or Solar and Energy Gain and how they will, or will they, you know, come, come out in the pilots? Hope that's all right.
Yeah, thanks. Dean or Nathan?
So just taking the first point in terms of, of time scales. You know, we, we have experience in terms of delivering capital projects with, within the council. So I think that sets us in good stead in terms of knowing the people who to speak to internally, procurement processes, et cetera. So I think nothing will be entirely sequential as we're developing things. You know, we'll be doing it in parallel in terms of getting all those pieces set up. So again, I, I would speak with confidence in terms of the time scales and, and when we are getting to site and starting to actually install the, the PV. So, yeah, I, I'd be confident from, from that perspective. And yes, there is absolutely keenness in terms of, you know, we, we have to do the proper due diligence in terms of the analysis, the outcomes. That does need to come back through committee, but we can begin to plan on what those next steps would, would look like in terms of the wider scale rollout and implementation. So again, I think there's a, a, a keenness and an interest that there wouldn't be this kind of long pause between the pilots and the next steps, that we can try and integrate that sort of back to back. And in terms of the community interest organisations, again, I think we benefit from good relationships across colleagues within those organisations. Again, that's fundamentally part of the pilot. So, you know, everything is on the table currently in terms of working with and supporting in terms of the local city interests. So absolutely, there, there is scope within there to, to partner with those organisations.
Thanks very much. Anything further?
So will, will those, will those points be kind of explained in, in the subsequent reports next year?
Right, well, it's really good news that things should be going off, you know, straight away really. You thought about starting work in January, which is now very soon. So that's definitely good news. It's, it's massive challenge. Also, we've of course got the opportunity because of course we do own a lot of roofs. And as we've got a roofing programme, we've got scaffolding in place already. So that's definitely an opportunity. Just, final question for me was, as you said, of course, we already have some schemes that have been built up. I think a hundred and fifty nine schemes around the city. It would be useful, I think, for the committee to see what the learning has been from that and some of the actual data. Because what this report doesn't contain is any, you know, outlined financial modelling of how the different schemes might work. Completely understand that it's not necessarily comparable in financial terms with those schemes because they benefited from the opportunities where they were there, that have now been taken away. But in terms of the energy generation from those panels, I think it would be useful to see, you know, what's happened with those. And I wonder if you could provide some, just the existing data that we have on things like generation, where the schemes are, the range of them, and maybe circulate that to the committee at, or probably through one of our briefings. If people find that helpful, I think we could perhaps do that, yeah. Did you want to say anything or are you just agreeing with that? Council Williams, yeah?
Thank you, Chair, yeah. I mean, fantastic report, very exciting project echoing all Council Norris's comments. I guess to me, the crux of this is, is the pilots. Because that's going to give us, I mean, to, to launch this across the estate, it's a staggering amount of money. So we've got to get as much intelligence as we, we can. Is there, and if I've missed it, I apologise, is there within the pilot scheme, an ongoing kind of feedback of in, in information? Because it would be a tragedy to get to the end of the pilot and say, gosh, I wish we'd thought about that. And I, I, is it flexible enough to, as the information starts coming through, to be able to adjust it?
So, yeah, as with any other project, there will be internal governance and we will feedback through regular reports in terms of the outcomes, learnings, again, that will shape, you know, potentially the future aspects of the pilot, but equally in terms of the, you know, the end products.
Thank you, yes. Council Norris, do you have anything to add?
It was only a little addition to what you were saying about comparison with the existing hundred and fifty nine. Is that, yeah, the, the financial climate's changed, but also the tech has changed quite a bit, I think, in that time. So it might not give comparable energy generation figures because the, I'm guessing the new panels are a lot more efficient?
Yeah, and, and that's what we'll need to look at. But if we could just start with the data on what we know so far, I think that'd be helpful. All right, okay. So we've got the recommendations, so it's on, it's on page three of the separate paper. And that's essentially to approve the strategy as set out there and then agree a further report back to the committee following the completion and evaluation of the pilots. Everyone happy to proceed on that basis? And thank you, Nathan and Manvi and Dean for all the work on that. Right, okay. Let's move on to next items. Item twelve is the leasehold management policy. And Dean, you're staying at the desk for that, aren't you? We've been through this. We've been through this at a briefing, thanks for incorporating comments. Yes, do you want to introduce it and say what the main points are, and then we'll take questions?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just in relation to the leasehold management policy, just need to confirm, this is for HRA leasehold properties, just to be very clear that it's not the private sector, it's what ex-council houses that we've sold. We've currently got approximately three thousand leasehold properties across Sheffield and that number is growing. It will probably grow over the next two years for the number of right-to-buy applications that are currently pending. And one thing that we've identified through our work with the regulator is that we need a policy which sets out our obligations and responsibilities for leaseholders. The policy is based on the lease, it's not overriding the lease, it's not review of the lease, we've not rewritten the covenants and the lease that sits within there. But what this policy will do is provide clarity to both Sheffield City Council and all the teams that work with our leaseholders, and also leaseholders by providing visibility, consistency and fair practices across the board, which we've not been very visible on in the past by doing that. Section two of the report sets out the areas that the policy will address, and that's leasehold management improvements, repairs and maintenance, consultations, subletting, neighbourhood walkabouts and garden maintenance, antisocial behaviour, breaches and extensions, service charges, major capital works and complaints and the tribunal process. And they say, through this policy, the council aims to achieve full cost recovery as well. And you've just seen through the housing revenue account business plan, that we're proposing to spend sixty million pound a year, based on our current ten percent leasehold population, that's approximately six million pound at full cost recovery that can be brought back into the housing revenue account, that's not been the case in the past. So we're making sure that we're putting processes in place to deliver that. But we're also focusing on making sure that we are charging for the right things through the management charge and also through our routine maintenance, not just the main capital programme that sits within there. The policy also recognises some of the financial burden that will be placed on leaseholders as a consequence of delivering some major capital programmes, whereas in the past, the expectation was leaseholders will repay their capital value within one year. Some of the works that will be undertaking within the next five-year capital programme will have significantly higher capital costs. Therefore, the options within the report and the recommendations are, we will have a number of options for the leasehold team to work with our leaseholders to make sure that we are offering the right repayment options to meet their particular need. I'm happy to take any questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Because coming to questions in a moment, just to clarify, so of course, this relates to right-to-bys, it's mostly flats that are, flats and maisonettes in blocks that are, where there are leases. Do we have any houses that were sold under right-to-buy that are subject to leases? Or are you just looking at flats and maisonettes?
The normal answer is no. I will do some digging on that because my past experience shows that there is sometimes where we've got leases that have other obligations that sit within the lease, but we would normally expect the answer to be nil, but I'll come back and clarify the answer.
That's fine. From my point of view, no need to come back on that, it's just to get a picture of what we're looking at, it's generally flats and houses, flats and maisonettes, isn't it? And these could be where they're owner-occupied, but also could be where the leaseholder is a landlord who lives elsewhere and lets out a private tenancy. So I just wanted to clarify this or picture of who we're looking at.
Great, thank you. councillor Atkinson, would you want to go first?
Hi, thank you. It's just four point seven, it says pets are not permitted, which I thought was a little bit strange. So is this just a policy that's been in place for a while and what's the reasoning behind it? And it says that, so leaseholders can apply for a personal pet licence, how much is that fee for that application? And what percentage of leaseholders are permitted a pet and what would be the reasons for denial?
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. And I'm going to have to defer on all of those and come back with that information because I haven't got the information at hand in relation to the cost of the licence and the percentage of our customers that will be impacted on that, but I will come back to committee with a full answer.
I think James wants to come in on that.
I just want to cover one thing though, which is we're not asking for agreement for a new lease, this is the existing lease that includes that, so if we were to remove, there'll be reasons why that's in there, which we can explain outside the meeting, but that's a separate decision that we'd be asking the committee to make rather than this.
Probably is worth saying that it's an important mechanism to be able to control things like dangerous dogs, so it probably is important to have that there. Right, okay. Did I have councillor Bellbin?
Thanks, Chair. I was just going to note first of all, on the point that you raised there, that the policy is very specific, that it applies to residential leasehold flats and maisonette properties only, so I think if there are other properties, we probably need to think about what covers those. So it is an important point, really. I know, Dean, that you talked about, it's an HRA leasehold management policy, and I recognise it says that on the top of the document, the actual policy, which is helpful, but I think when we're kind of sharing this online and so on, there's obviously a lot out, particularly in Sheffield, in the news around leasehold at the moment, and it's probably wise to be very, very clear about that. It's come up on our agenda, just as leasehold management policy, and that may have set some hairs running, should we suggest. The main issue I wanted to raise, though, I know we had quite a bit of discussion in some of the pre-meetings and so on, around this issue that, again, councillor Johnson has just raised, around many of the leaseholders may actually be absentee landlords, but there will also be a number of people who perhaps just rent out their property on a very temporary basis because they go away to work for a year or something like that. And we had a bit of discussion about how much information to put in this policy to support people who are subletting on that kind of perhaps more informal basis. It will be formal, obviously, for it to be a sublet, and I suppose I'm very conscious of things like making sure insurances are valid and things like that that might impact other people. So have we landed anywhere, if you like? And I agree, I think that if you're an absentee landlord who is doing this as a means of making a living, you really should be aware of all your own kind of rights and responsibilities around being a landlord. But are we, have we got something in place to make sure we are supporting those people who may be perhaps on a less profit-making basis, shall we say, just saying they've vacated their flat, or they're subletting for a short period, that we can support those people?
I think it's fair to say, councillor Bellbin, that our leasehold population can be quite transient, it changes on a regular basis, both in relation to the number of leaseholders who live in their own property and the number of leaseholders who will either stay there and live or rent out, or we've got the commercial activities who may have five, ten, fifteen properties on their own. One of the things that we need to get better at as a service is how do we promote and how do we push out this information? So everybody's very clear as to their roles, rights, responsibilities, and how they challenge us back as a local authority in terms of the services that we provide. I think it was at last meeting, we brought the insurance process so that we could go out and procure a new insurance service, so it doesn't matter whether you are living in your property or you're a landlord, your obligation is to pay that and you are covered by your insurance within that, so there will be no gaps in relation to the insurance that is provided.
Thanks very much. Just on councillor Bellbin's point there, I mean, as she quite right points out, it said, like why, this policy applies to residential leasehold flats and maisonette properties only. If there are some houses, presumably we would want to apply this policy in the same way, wouldn't we? Do we need to amend this or would it just work out in practice, do you think?
I will get the numbers and if we need to amend it, we will amend it and then we'll come back and say what we've amended.
I mean, we could have necessarily say that we'd have an extra recommendation to apply this to any leasehold houses, if that's helpful. Let's come back to that point when we look at the recommendations. Just go to councillor Turpin, I think, next.
Thanks. I think actually that's some casework a couple of years ago where there was a leaseholder, there was work needed done to a path and their house was the first one on the path and they objected to paying for the path because they never used it, and I think that was a house. So anyway, we'll see how that turns out. I just wanted to ask about the service charge and if the proposal, so you say six million pounds a year, nineteen thousand privately-owned council homes, using basic figures here, obviously, that's about three hundred and fifteen pound a year. Is the proposal to basically charge every leaseholder three hundred and fifteen pound a year or however that adjusts depending on rental value? Because I'm still like thinking that the problems seem to arise when it's like, right, we're going to put a new roof on this block of flats, so everybody has to pay a share, when perhaps it might be better to actually, you know, in a private block of flats, everybody would pay a service charge and that would effectively become a sync fund, so when they fix the roof, nobody is asked for extra money. And I just think that that model is kind of essentially more effective than having a charge-back model where if somebody was to pay for their bit of roof to be fixed or if they live on the ground floor even, you know, it would often be cheaper to fix your own roof than have the council fix it for you.
Thank you, councillor Turpin. The service charges are not relating to capital work or major scheme work, they only relate it to the day-to-day management and operation and small-scale costs in relation to the function that is performed. So as it's variable, it will vary from scheme to scheme to scheme depending on what they have. And the examples we've put in section fifteen of the policy here, door entry systems, CCTV will be covered by the service charge, not every leasehold scheme has got those, so it's differential and variable depending on where you are. In relation to the question of sinking fund, no, historically it's something that we as Sheffield have not implemented. We do the work and then we recharge. Other organisations in the sector have sinking fund options within that, and that is something that we probably need to go away and consider as part of this work and look at the cost-benefit analysis of doing that and the impact on the local authority in relation to finances, but also the impact on the residents as well. So I think it is one that we can go away and have a look at, but it's not at this moment in time in the work programme.
Bringing in James on that point, I mean, the question is, is there provision for a sinking fund in the lease? James, what do you want to say, though?
Two quick things just to build on that. So on the variable service charges, there's a longstanding commitment to full charge, full cost recovery, but that's often limited in practice by the availability of the data that allows us to differentiate in the way the dean's described. So, you know, a block with a lot of green space around it will need to pay a different charge to a block with no green space because there's no grass cutting. So unless the service and services across the council are able to demonstrate down to that granular level where the costs are going, it becomes difficult to justify evidence a very specific variable charge, but that is a process we are on. So we are slowly but surely improving our data about where the money is spent and in what proportion, which will allow us to get to a more accurate set of service charges for all leaseholders. And that reduces the unfairness in the current system where if we're not able to recharge leaseholders, that is effectively a subsidy from our tenants via the HRA. And then I think just on major works, the other point I'd make is, this relates to the asset management strategy, because the council's not had a long-term view of how much investment it will be making in different kind of major elements such as roofs and where that investment will take place, it's not, it wouldn't have been possible, and it still isn't possible yet, to be really clear with the leaseholders about exactly when we will get to your block. And that's why the funding system, I guess, is quite reactive, so once we've done the work, we then recharge. Where we, when we get to a position, as we will hopefully over the next few years, of a more certain forward look around our capital programme, that opens up opportunities for, I think, a more mature relationship with our leaseholders around when we think those investments will happen and what's the most effective way and fair way to ensure that leaseholders are able to pay in a way that's affordable to them.
Great, thanks, yeah. Can we come back on that?
Thanks. Yeah, thanks. And so I was going to ask, which is, I know it's not to do with this, but will tenants also, if we were to have a service charge, maintenance and things, that ought to also probably apply to tenants, I would say? And just on the principle of, because when you say, you know, we're going to do an improvement to this block, so why should other tenants subsidise that block? Well, actually, that is how council housing works, isn't it? All tenants are subsidised by somewhere else, from somewhere else, you know, it's a very holistic socialist model, council housing. And so I think it's perfectly fine to have a holistic model of funding, well, you know, this year it's your block, next year it's their block, and not have to narrow it down so that the benefits are shared across the city, but the disbenefits must be paid by those people who live in that spot. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I understand and noted. I guess I just made the point that you can only spend the money once, so if we're not able to recover some of that income, it means we can do less overall. And that's just a reality of the capital programme, so the more that we can bring back in, the more ambitious we can be around the number of roofs and kitchens and bathroom replacements that we want to do. But ultimately, obviously, it's partly a decision for the committee.
Yeah, okay. Let's move on. councillor Norris?
Just the other thing I was going to say to that, is leaseholders aren't our tenants, so they're not paying our rents to us, so it's not, it doesn't work in quite the same way, was what I was thinking. But what I wanted to ask about was, and I might have missed it, gas avoidance, servicing for leaseholders, is that something that's in the lease rather than this? Or how, I mean, obviously, again, large-scale, people that are large-scale landlords should, there's a responsibility, but I wondered about the people that are just living in the houses. And the other thing that occurred to me while Fran was speaking is Airbnb and similar. I don't know if that throws up any other legal issues.
Just in relation to gas prices, there's no covenant within the lease that specifies that here has to be undertaken. So we will be in a scenario with some of our blocks whereby we've got responsibilities of local authority to have a hundred percent compliance, but the rented properties, there will be gaps in relation to compliance, and we need to work to understand what those issues are and then work with our leasehold communities to think about how we understand what the risk is to us as a local authority and how we're going to plug that. So that's a conversation that's going to take place over the next twelve months with the leasehold team. And again, it comes back to, first of all, how do we communicate the rights and obligations and how do we push out those messages for people who are living in those blocks as leaseholders? It's your responsibility to ensure you've got your annual gas safety certificate, but where you are a landlord, you have an obligation to provide your electric certificate and your gas certificate to the people who are living in your properties and how do we make sure that that is done? But again, there's no provision at the moment for us to check the work that those individual landlords are doing to understand whether they've got those certificates in place or not. And just in relation to Airbnb, there is provision within the policy itself in terms of the behaviours of people who are moving in, so we cannot prevent people actually having an Airbnb. The issue for us then, if we've got continuous antisocial behaviour that happens as a consequence of behaviours of the people living in those properties, we have a number of enforcement actions that we can take. The ultimate enforcement action will be forfeiture of lease, which means that the leaseholder or the landlord would have to give their lease back to the local authority in that particular instance. Happens in very, very few occasions where that happens, but where there is continuous antisocial behaviour, that is the ultimate sanction that we can go for.
Thanks very much. Okay, councillor Williams, you have a question?
Yeah, really, follows on, well, along the follows on from what you've just been talking about over antisocial behaviour, given the debate we had yesterday. I was surprised when I read eleven that it seemed all one way, i.e. if a leaseholder is a victim of antisocial behaviour, but now I notice in twelve it covers off where they are, they or their subtenant or whatever are perpetrators of antisocial behaviour. You talk about forfeiture of leasehold, now given that if I'm under right-to-buy, I buy this property and it has a lease because it's in a block of apartments or whatever, does forfeiture, do I get any money back if I forfeit my lease? Do you have to buy it back? Because it's that grey area always, I always struggle to understand, you know, what am I, you know, what is, what am I as a leaseholder? Do I own the property or not, or am I merely a long-term rent? The answer to that is very much, we'll determine on what the court judgment was. And sometimes from my experience, the leaseholder has to put the market on, the property on the market and dispose of it in a certain period of time to comply with the regulation. Again, it all depends on the outcome of the court judgment, but there are various options that can be delivered.
Right, thanks very much. I think we've got the end of questions there. And I think the important... And I think the important thing is, I think this will really help to get a bit more awareness throughout the service of the impact on leaseholders, because we know in some parts of the city there's a lot of leaseholders. And of course, there are all the people who have benefited from the right-to-buy or someone's benefited from the right-to-buy and taking those properties out of council stock. So it is quite important that they don't end up being subsidised by the people who still remain as direct tenants of the council. So councillor Norris, you're trying to get him with the last question, aren't you?
No, it's just a thought. You know what you were saying about over the coming year, we're going to look at gas and gas safety compliance. Can we have an update on that when you've done it?
Thanks, yes, a fair request if we can add that into the briefings. Right, can I just go to the recommendations? And let's just ask about this one. So recommendations on page one hundred. Essentially, the, we're being asked to resolve to approve the leasehold management policy as set out in appendix one, which seems fairly uncontroversial. Do we want to add in a line there saying plus application to leasehold houses to the extent they exist? Or is that an unnecessary complication? James, your advice on that?
I would rather not because we will need to consult our colleagues in legal services around whether it's appropriate to apply all these clauses if it's a leasehold house. So we will need to bottom that out. But obviously, the first order question is, do we own any leasehold houses? So we will we'll do that first and then and then come back with the revision if we need to.
That that seems fine. It's it's sort of policy which is a good guide to the council's approach. Okay, so in that case, we've got a fairly simple recommendation to approve the policy. Everyone happy with that? Everyone's happy with that. Right, so that's unanimously agreed. Thank you. Very interesting discussion there. Okay, so we're now on to the final item, and we're on there on the housing capital programme. So Dean, don't go away. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair, very much for your information. This report is the quarter two capital report update. The the thing I would highlight is in January twenty twenty five, as part of the annual budget setting process, we allocated ninety point seven million pounds to the capital programme, both for the homes improvement programme and the stock increase programme. Within that, the current forecast compared to previous years is looking more positive. That we're probably seeing a slippage at this moment in time of two point eight million because of underspends on projects that we have been currently undertaking that will come in under price within that. The stock increase programme in terms of the forecasting is still forecasting that we will spend this year forty-three million as part of that particular programme. And again, from a positive perspective, we have spent thirty-three percent of the capital budget this year, which is significantly higher than what we've reported in previous years. And through the work that we're doing through forecasting, it is our expectation that we will spend a significantly higher proportion of the capital budget this year than we have done in previous years.
Thank you very much. Right, any questions on this item? Of course, it is largely an item for information and reporting back. Councillor Norris?
Yeah, really welcome the change. It's great. Just wondered, there was a few questions. The electrical work and lift replacements have been deferred, and I wondered why. Newstead general needs is overspent by just under one and a half million, and again, I wondered why. And then a question about the private sector homes upgrade grant, or we've underspent some of it. Can we keep that money for something else, like the warm homes scheme, which is also an upgrade to private sector homes? I mean, it might not be possible depending on the terms of the month of the grant, but what what could we spend that underspend on rather than give it back?
Thank you, councillor Norris. Just in relation to electrical upgrades and the lift replacements, it's because we've got lower contractual costs in those pieces of work. It's not, we've not done the work. It's it's the lower unit cost that we've managed to procure through that, those particular process. I'm not sure on the Newstead, I will come back to committee with an answer on the Newstead piece of work. Just in relation to the private sector upgrade grant, any underspend on the capital programme, we've then got to go through the governance route to then secure an alternative project through that. So that will come through our Gateway and Homes Programme Group, and will ultimately get reported through the Strategy and Resources Committee. But again, we will be having, if if that is the case, we will have conversations with Housing Policy Committee at knowledge briefs before we do that.
Thanks. Can I just pick up on what councillor said just about the Newstead scheme? Because although it's reporting an overspend, I assume that's on top of other significant overspends that were in the past. It would probably be useful for the committee to have a a note at some point on actually the total cost, the total overspends, and and then ultimately what the unit cost per property is, just for our information. So I wonder if you could take that away, Dean, and circulate something after the meeting?
I will have a conversation with our growth team straight away, Chair.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, any other questions? If not, then, you know, essentially, we are due to note this, aren't we? We have the recommendation on page one hundred and eight, which is, yes, to note the capital programme outturn at the end of quarter two and to note the updated budget position for the five-year housing capital programme. If people are happy with that, getting nods there, so we'll take that as approved. Thank you very much for that, Dean. So we're at the end of the agenda. For what was a packed agenda, we've actually got through it pretty concisely and on time. So thanks for that, for asking pertinent questions and not rambling long ones that completely miss the point. No comment on the policy normally. And so the the final thing that was, it's December. I won't say it's Christmas, but it is nearly Christmas. And when we discuss this, we recognise it's really important to thank our staff, especially over Christmas, but for work all year round. And just where we're talking about, things like roof replacements, I'm thinking of, you know, the fact that we have to have staff on call for emergency repairs on Christmas Day, Boxing Day and that. It will undoubtedly be cold and wet when those emergency repairs have to take place. It's not that much for them going out, but someone has to do it. Really important, we look after tenants, we have people on call for that. And we have people who are dealing with emergency housing situations. So and of course, it's the, you know, really sad thing that domestic violence often peaks at Christmas. It's an incredibly stressful time. Sometimes that boils over, sometimes that leads to emergency housing needs. And we, you know, and actually, if you're the staff member having to deal with that, deal with, you know, urgent requests at a time when all services are closed, it's actually really, you know, quite traumatic on those staff. And you need to make sure that there's support in place for them too. I'm not saying that every interaction with our staff, obviously, is a trauma, but the the work over Christmas can be particularly difficult. So I think it's just worth paying tribute to staff who are going to be doing that over this season. But yeah, all year round, we have a lot of staff who are actually very professional in their way and dealing with some quite difficult customer service issues, providing the best service that we can to all our tenants across the board. So, yeah, I think we, I'm sure we'll all want to agree to pass on that thanks. I presume we can formally note that that record of thanks in the minutes, getting nods there. So I've just proposed that we do that. In which case, thank you very much. We'll close the meeting there, and we will pick up for another housing committee in the new year. Thank you very much.